To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have no requests to open forum and we're going to go right to presentations and our FFA Nationals convention presentation.
Sure, I would love to introduce the team here represented. If Mrs. Arsenal come up with our student representatives from the FFA. Mrs. Arsenal is agriculture teacher at City Central School District and helps with the FFA as well too. I have to give a shout out to Mr. Waltz who's also here.
Sure.
Right, Mr. Waltz, along with that teacher at the FFA, advisor along with Mrs. Arsenal. And then the team of FFA leadership.
Yeah, so I do the 4th grade, 9th grade agriculture and all of our officers are going to introduce themselves in their positions.
I'm Chris Hartman, I'm the president.
I'm Owen Hartman, you're vice president.
I am Pete Scott, I'm the secretary.
I'm Leah Feiger, I'm the treasurer.
I'm May Maitland, I'm the sentinel.
There's an awesome class. We play this at the time?
So I'm actually going to start us off because while at convention, I had the opportunity to attend some professional development workshops. So the first one was keys to completing scholarships, grants, and the national charter application. So we really focused on being a student-centered process and how streamlined it is to make it more accessible for our students. And then the second workshop that I went to was called Teaching Skills But Pay The Bills. It was all about our Workways to Learning program, which is our supervised agriculture experiences. And we played SAE Monopoly where we got a card and we could see on the screen and we had to come up with what SAE opportunities for that student might be. So we got to break down with educators from all across the nation and talk about how we can implement that into our classes. And so one of my goals is to work with Mrs. Wilson, the farming school coordinator, to implement more classroom opportunities so we can really build that program here. So I really appreciate you guys supporting our agriculture program and supporting us attending this convention because it really did help me, yeah, finding you and others to these workshops. And our students are going to talk about the tours and what they got at the convention themselves.
So for the Lake Erie Nature and Science Center, it's a center that cares for wounded animals and helps them get back to their normal state as much as possible by rehabilitation.
Yep, so like Pete said, it provides wildlife rehabilitation at no cost to the public and many domestic and wildlife close to enclosure. So we get to see a whole bunch of animals like snakes, eagles, and a whole lot more. Don't ask me about the snakes. Don't ask me about the snakes. Nope, there's a picture of me up in the curls, up in the corner. I think it's not in there.
I'm going to put it on the spot. We'll put it on the top right picture.
It was a challenge.
That was actually Walt's creation and decided to recreate it because he couldn't be there.
So the South Bend Chocolate Company, it was like a chocolate factory and we got to see how they make all their products and we were able to taste a variety of their products. And they have like their own recipe that they send out, they get the chocolate bars, they melt them and then they coat all their popcorn, pretzels and stuff in that chocolate. And then they had a museum that holds the largest collection of chocolate memorabilia, including a 13,000 year old, well, 1,300 year old Mayan chocolate pot.
Any samples?
Well, for us. Not leftover.
Okay, so Kat, we got to visit where the largest tractor-type tractor assembly building in the world, which is 16 and a half acres. We toured the entire building, saw how everything was made, put together, and sent out.
So every machine that they make is tested and ran before it gets shipped out to the buyer. And the museum that we visited, it was pretty cool because they had a simulator and I got to try it out, but I kind of wanted to figure it out because I didn't see the directions and it was like a time thing, so I didn't really do good.
You weren't getting any impression?
No, I was just, I don't know, it was a little tough.
So we went to Olanco where we met the CEO, Jeffrey Simmons, who also attended a school here in New York that we traveled on the bus with, Pen Yen. And he shared with us his experiences in life and where FFA got him and how FFA got him to where he is now.
So Olanco is a business that creates treatments and everything else to prevent diseases in animals, anything from pets, farm animals, truly any animal that you could possibly imagine. They're creating the cures for it and the treatment for it. If you look at, say, flea treatment, you're going to see their brand at the bottom of it. They're a huge, huge thing in the world animal, world of animal science. And then Jeff actually gifted us the book Unreasonable Hospitality, which is a book about a five-star restaurant in New York City, which the owner goes above and beyond with the service of clients to keep people coming in, to keep that reputation really together of what hospitality really should be.
All right, so next up is Fair Oaks Farm. We had, we went on a lot of tours to see their dairy and pig exhibits. So we saw birthing barns, went on a bus adventure, it was a really cool bus, it ran on methane. We saw a berrowing barn, interactive ultrasound experience.
Uh, okay, nevermind. Oh, so my favorite part about that was that we got to saw the cows go on, I don't remember what it was called.
The rodeo parlor?
Yeah, the rodeo parlor where they got milked on it and there was 72 cows that got on it and they looked pretty cozy going around the wheel.
All right, next up is Pontiac Flying Services. Pontiac Flying Services provides aerial planting opportunities for farmers.
Um, this was a family-owned business. They owned eight airplanes and they would go down to Florida or just other surrounding states and fertilize fields in a day and then just come on back. And then same with, people would come up from Florida to help get fields done up here. It's just a way faster way than using tractors and things like that to fertilize fields because it can make a two-hour process go down to 10 minutes. Um, so one of the things that me and Hayes got to do was the Courtesy Corpse for the rodeo. We got to take out the American flag during the National Anthem. There was 14 of us from our bus that volunteered to do this and we went and we practiced it beforehand about an hour and a half before everyone else came to watch the rodeo. And then during the National Anthem, we brought it out and we displayed it.
So before we got there, earlier than everyone else, to practice setting up the flag and after we got done running through the flag, we got to go like behind the pens to meet all animals and just see them, it was pretty cool.
So the convention was held in, at the, in a convention center and we spent Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday in the Axe Hall and that session. In the sessions, there was awards handed out, a talent show, and retiring address for our national officers. Some of the exhibits were college tractor manufacturers, agriculture-based businesses, military FFA service experience booth, and then the Courtesy Corpse, which is a chance to put yourself forward and volunteer in things such as bagging clothes, rodeo, women, etc.
Um, so these are just some pictures from convention itself. In the bottom left-hand corner, there's a picture of me and Emily doing the community service. We made stress toys for local charities. And then in the top right corner, we also got to go around and talk to a bunch of different colleges from around the US and get to talk to representatives from places we didn't even know existed. And then our lovely advisor in the bottom right-hand corner, we thought should get a picture in the slides.
Can you slide it up?
Yeah, we thought it was a personality picture.
So here is, we're in the bottom right corner is a picture of Leah and I with our state treasurer, Eric. He's an awesome person, we ended up running into him, got a picture with him. The bottom left corner is we, is a picture of Leah and a representative in Ducks Unlimited. We had these things called ghost chasers, which were challenging throughout the week to keep us busy. And one of the challenges was to talk to the representative from there. We might have tricked Leah and talked to him for a little longer, but it was worth it, we got to use useful info out of it. The top left corner is a picture of Hayes and a person from Welling Welding. He's a big welder, so it was an awesome chance for him to meet someone from there. And then the middle picture is a picture of me with people from my favorite state of Iowa, just had to represent them a little bit.
All right, so that concludes our presentation for tonight. Again, I want to say huge thank you for you all supporting that little bit of trip of the FFA program overall. We wouldn't be here without you guys, so we really appreciate it. We are missing Austin Tyne due to a sporting event, so she did write a little letter for you guys. This is from Adrian Tanner. Thank you all so much for making this trip possible and an amazing time I'm never going to forget. I'm sorry I'm not here to present this for, sorry, this for you myself, but I had a prior commitment that I had to attend. The trip is a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity and I am so grateful I had the chance to experience it. I am so honored to have this experience at the convention. I loved every stop, every trip stop, and enjoyed hanging out with all of our FFA members. My future trip, my favorite, my favorite, my future trip that we went on was the chocolate factory because for one, we got to eat chocolate and you got to learn how chocolate was made. It was overall amazing experience. I had an altered, we've been to see Lady Wilson in concert and she's my favorite singer. Anyway, thank you for this amazing chance. I'm sorry I cannot have been there, thank you Adrian.
Do you have any questions for the office of the trip?
What's a berrowing barn? Where the pigs are raised. So every life stage of the pig is they're going to be put in a different separate section of the barn. So they'll have a few weeks old and then as they grow, they'll get put into different sections of the barn. So as they age, you have pigs of the same period so they can put more, younger pigs into it.
So the road green milker, dude, does the first cow have to wait for the last cow to be melted before they start melting there?
No, oh, sorry, you can melt it.
No, it's just kind of as, as they go on, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't really stop unless, like how, doesn't get off, but it doesn't start until the next one.
Thank you for the, uh... Well...
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have our policy committee update.
Sure, I'll do general case, I'll do policy.
Oh, sorry.
No, there's nothing. Just want to thank Mrs. Arsenal and the FFA leadership team for their presentation tonight. And it was one of those kind of last minute that they couldn't get in, if you remember that, decided the permission to be able to go, but it's a strong leadership group and we say we're still here to talk about the overall participation in the FFA, the junior FFA, the senior FFA, right? Remember, we always were, I'll say around like the 15 kid mark and they now have their FFA meetings in the library for the participation, which is well over 40 kids that participate in the FFA. It's a great leadership opportunity. I'm a huge advocate for it too, having been in the FFA, right, all the way through high school myself, right? It just presents so many different opportunities for, for kids that, from leadership to public speaking to networking, it's just a, it's a powerful opportunity. So thank you for continuing to support it and just thank for them to be here. So I'd also like to welcome a guest tonight, Mr. Mike Rulo, who is with us. He's the district superintendent of DCM OBOSEES. Mr. Rulo is also a longtime superintendent of the Harperville Central School District and high school principal there for a long time. So, welcome to City, Mike.
Thanks, it's great to be here. And what a treat to watch your students do this presentation and, yeah, I was wondering if they were going to pull out like a bag of chomp of popcorn.
Yeah, chomp of chomp or something, you know? Sure, I know, right?
So I don't want to take much time now, I just wanted to come and meet you all, give you a chance to put a face to the name and similarly for me, just to get a sense of, of your district, your board functions, who you are, let you know that we're working hard, at least in OBOSEES, to be the very best partners we can be for our component districts. And I'm always available through, even through his team, certainly our board president, so don't hesitate to reach out if there's anything that you need from me or anything that we can do or do better, that's, that's our interest. So appreciate it, appreciate your work, you know, as a board and for your students. You know, certainly everyone in this region knows the opportunity that kids have here at City Central School. And we're obviously appreciative of those opportunities and if these young people are our examples of the quality of student you have in your house, it's good for you, what a treat, so thank you.
Thanks for making the trip.
Just a couple of the things, just we're planning on sending out information for the next step to the district's mascot logo process. Just remember, we're keeping the same code, we're in white. We are going to keep the block S, the formal S, right, that we continue to use. And we're hoping to be able to begin the process early January and be able to present to the board at the March 12th Board Meeting logos and mascot, if you will, for that. So again, we'll send some more information out afterwards to the community, talking about what the process is. But just to kind of a quick summary, instead of sending out, hey, here's the submissions, right, we'll talk about what the process is and have a link if somebody's interested in creating a submission. And then they would click that link and it would take them, let's say, back to the website, right, where the nickname and mascot information has been, this whole process. And then that's where we'd have the specific information from file type to specifics and color restrictions from the bring guy. So instead of sending all of that out to everybody, right, it's kind of a select group of people that could perhaps submit a potential logo and mascot. So that will go out at the beginning of January and then we'll have some updates using the, at least the student stakeholder group to help refine and shape and mold what that is to bring ideas to that. And then, again, hopefully by the March 12th Board Meeting, we'll be able to reveal it to the, to the board and to the community at that point in time. Because really, we want to, we want some time for the rebranding process, to be able to tie things in for really playing for July 1, complete transition over, start of school year, like we welcome back social emotional learning kits, if you will, so just we want to make sure we have as much time as we can to budget appropriately, procure anything that we might want to buy appropriately that takes time. So it's kind of the process for that, if you will, timeline for it.
I like that we're keeping it student-centered, just like maybe the mascot was too, what the kids do, let them all, let them make their way through it and the submissions and stuff, so good.
Yeah, picturing, right, with the student stakeholder group, that was a great group, right, is to present back to them, here are some of the submissions, what do you like, what do you not like, fonts, colors, obviously your colors are going to be the same, but ideas and let them kind of work through that process of editing, providing feedback, seeing what that looks like, coming back and going, going back. Mr. Stenna will probably lead that most up with their, with their student groups. And then obviously we'll, we'll continue to communicate timely and accurate throughout the entire process, so. Yeah, that's where we'll, that's where we'll start with. Just really quick, the district had three very successful audits this past week. Some of them have been going on longer than a week, but this past week, we received final notice in that the district is in full compliance with the New York State Education, it's the Education Stimulus Fund, the ESF monitoring that we talked about, audit, it's a monitoring, that the ESF monitoring is, remember that looked at all of our federal funds. We did our stakeholder group presentation here at the last board meeting where Mrs. Warner did a great job of putting together all of the different funding sources with the allocations, what's already been spent, what's been covered already, and the remaining balance, and then we're in good shape to be able to spend that out. So we did get notification that we are in complete compliance for that. So just a big thank you to Amy Warner for her work and Carrie Johnson and Nancy Edwards and Connie Rufford, just their attention to detail and being able to put all that together. The other two audits were the elementary health office and the elementary cafeteria. So just a huge thank you, very deserving to Nicole Rose and Suzanne Hoskins in the health office for putting together all of the files. And the elementary cafeteria also had an audit conducted one morning where two people came in and watched the elementary cafeteria function for all of our breakfast services and then looked through all of the records from the elementary cafeteria. And just a huge thank you to Fiona Steinis and Sarah Longwell and Grace Payne and Stephanie Bennett, Michelle Blenko, Kelsey Pope, Faye Parsons, and Kathy Schubert in the elementary cafeteria for their attention to detail, their commitment to providing good, healthy, nutritious foods for our kids. Both, both audit responses before they left sent, or that would be, and sent nice emails just about how positive people were, how organized they were, how attention to detail people were with their records. And that's just kudos to those great teams and those people on those teams.
Even what was the scope of that audit?
Which one?
The elementary school cafeteria, like what were they auditing?
Functionally and service lines, right? So do we keep food, first of all, do we have, are we serving appropriate nutritious foods, right, like the complete meal, if you will? How it's served, preparation of those, of that meal, how it's distributed to kids, how kids know their lunch numbers, really pretty much start to finish on the entire process for serving.
So it was like the serve safe type of situation plus the, the actual function of it?
Oh, yeah.
All those are just unscheduled walk-ins or?
No, we knew, we knew the elementary cafeteria probably, I'll say, two weeks in advance, something like that, and the health office about the same. They don't really tell you what they're looking for necessarily. You just are prepared for it and like the health office, I use that example, they were very prepared, right? They had their ducks in a row, their files ready and just super pleased with what, what came out of it, so.
What they audit there in the health office?
Oh, everything from... Yeah, I would say everything from immunization records, but you know, is everything up to stuff, that's what that one was, was immunization records.
If you don't have them up to date, then you get fines, right, like $2,000.
Sure, without department or writer. Yep, so these happen in the transportation office, right, transportation center, if you don't have all of your, you know, training up to snuff, right, they'll fine you anywhere from a hundred bucks to $10,000. So just very, very good, very pleased and awesome teams, yeah. Just a couple of the things, you'll see an acceptance of, from the Salvation Army for donation. Just a Salvation representative from the Salvation Army met with our school counselors and our nurses to identify some needs for our kids for boots and shoes. There's a tremendous need for that. And their donation was over $2,000 worth of brand new boots and shoes for our kids to be able to distribute. So that's just a big thank you for Salvation Army and just their generous donation to our school and to our kids and our community. I appreciate that.
Does that give us enough?
Yeah, for right now, yeah. And don't quote me on there, but maybe one of you can help me out, but there's another donation from the Salvation Army, I think, for clothing, if I'm not mistaken, in addition to this was just boots and shoes, anybody know that or not? Right, is that what it is? I'm looking, somebody told me, right? I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm getting blank stares here.
What you said, yeah.
I was like, I know, somebody told me, okay, now you're not here.
They'll be for clothing right now.
Yeah, it's like, I don't know anything about.
Just another quick thing, in the agenda, you'll see that we're adopting this school budget calendar. Just one thing to note on there, the only thing that's new in there is the early voter option, just to point that out. The early voter option will align when we send out the absentee ballots and the military ballots, that's a little bit different than that. Just like to give a shout out to the, and again, Mr. Waltz, he stepped out already, but the Raymond Welding partnership that we have, our students again did the holiday display for the Roberson Museum, so if you're down there, I know Carrie and her family went to the Roberson Museum this past weekend. It is a beautiful display, probably one of the best that I've seen. Once it's done, we'll come back here and set it up, but they did a, that class did a great job. Remember, that's a, the idea is given to them from the Raymond to build their holiday display and then they have to design and fabricate and problem solve, meeting the criteria for it and it's exceptional display, it's really, it's pretty cool.
It's a quick turnaround, it's due in early November.
Early November, yeah. Tony, Mr. Stenna, do you know how long they have to work on that?
They usually, they go down to Raymond's to get the idea and the conference room, they pitch the parameters, timelines and everything at Raymond's. When they do the tour of the facility, they get kind of their specs and everything. That's probably, yeah, early to mid-November, I mean, they're not long, they came up with that pretty quick. They'll take it, they'll ask sometimes to transport pieces to OBOSEES to work on it and grind it at OBOSEES and to make sure that they have plenty of time to get it done. Probably the best painting job that a group has done in a long time too. So there, that was one area of weakness that even the kids had mentioned, you know, prior to that painting, they didn't have a ton of experience with painting, but they did a great job in this one.
They did and, Tony, Mr. Stenna, I have started a tradition that we have taken down the display each year and set it up in the Roberson and we tear it down and we work with the Raymond team that's there to set it up. So it's a, it's a, it's a pretty cool process and it's a really nice display, so we'll set it up here once we're all done, if you have a new job. And just a, a quick, there was an internal team made up of our transportation team, Doug Russell, Mark Hoteling, Jim Button, Director of Facilities, Chris Simon, our Emma team, Amy Warner, myself, Carrie Johnson, that met with Cornus Technology and Leonard Bus to really start conversations around the electrification transition for school districts. So we met this last week in just, just high-level conversations on things to think about, consider as we, as we work this process. I disagree, myself attended probably seven or eight different sessions, if you remember last time, we talked about this in November at the NISBA conference, just collecting data and listening to stories that were disixed or app. And so that was a great team. That team is also currently working with Johnson City, who should have their first electric bus delivered in a few weeks. Their process is a fairly good, smooth, transparent process. It's the same group that's worked with them. And our first step really is to do an energy study. So on Friday, I submitted a, what they call a fleet application survey to NICE that includes what our, what our fleet consists of, 28 vehicles, type A, type C, type D, type H vehicles, kind of the range and route distances and times, if you will. So it's very high-level information, just submit it to NICE, so, and then NICE will now do what they call an energy study for us. They'll start that at the beginning of January and what that, what they'll do is they'll take a number from like 30 to 45 babies a week and then they'll come back and they'll talk about the energy, what energy you have being provided to the transportation center, right? So first and foremost, is there enough energy supply coming to the transportation center? And really like, what would that energy do, right? Will it charge two buses, right? Will it charge five buses? So what is the capability of it right now? So you can't really do, a school district can't do anything without the energy study first and foremost. So we'll do that first and then do that presentation, assuming we have it. We have it by the February Board Meeting, I'll present it here what the energy study says, and then we'll go to the next step, right? And the next step would then be to talk about the different funding sources that districts have available to them, whether it would be the bus replacement piece, where you can trade a bus in, whether it be the rebate portion of it, there's a couple of different funding sources that districts can do, but we don't get a, we don't want to get ahead of our game, let's first take a look at like, what, what energy do we have coming to our transportation center right now? And then we'll go to the next step, right? I think, just looking at a timetable, I think a great goal for the school district, and again, we would have to do a lot of advocacy for this within our, within our community or meetings, but I think a great goal with this would be to shoot for like a May 2025, not this May, but a May 2025, proposition for one or two electric buses. Again, so we have about a year and a half to collect our, do our homework, collect data, inform, advocate, communicate, all of that. So not to rush it, that puts us in a good timetable. Remember, some key dates to this would be 2027 is the last that you can buy a fossil fuel school bus, and 2035 is when your, your fleet has to be transitioned over. But again, that's what New York State has said right now, where you kind of put the stake in a game as this is what we're going to start with. Might that change? Maybe, right? Might there be extensions? Maybe, right? But this is what we know as of right now and we'd be silly not to move at least in that right direction. But I think it's important to do, so we're, we communicate extremely well, we're methodical with our moves and calculated with our moves to make sure that we can take advantage of any potential rebate opportunities. So for example, in the last, I'll call it three days or so, four days, there's now a rebate incentive for chargers, right, and is that separate of buses? So there's, things are developing as we go, so we don't, I might give Mr. Stenna the credit, we don't always have to be first, right? We just have to be timely, accurate, and transparent, right? So I think it's important to continue to move in that direction. I think it's important to do our homework, like what Mrs. Green and I did at NISBA, and to see other school districts' experiences, what they've gone through, what's worked or what's not. I'm actually do that on a regular basis. And then just be transparent with what our process is going to be as we transition to this. So that's that piece. And then just know that we're, we're still going to replace our diesel fleet as, as needed up until that 2027, right? Because once 2027 ends, we really need our diesel fleet to last to 2035, right? So we want to be calculated with replacing our diesel fleet, right, at the same time as we're planning this. So a very high level scenario to this would be have your diesel fleet be able to go to 2030, 2035, right? And build in, let's say, two electric buses over the next few years and try them on different routes, really in a sense, in a sense, experimentally, right? Run them on different routes, have our mechanics work on them, right, get comfortable with them, let our community see them, right, let our drivers train on them, right? And that would be a, a good step and a very sensible step is to practice with that, right? They may not be, it's like, for example, now we have, we have two to three spare buses right now, let's say DOT comes in and inspects them, right, we would take one of those spare buses around. Same type of thing, our diesel buses would be our main fleet and we would infuse those extra into those routes and collect data, right? There's significant software, right, that is built into the buses that will tell you all of the analytics on your bus, when to charge, when not to charge, all kinds of stuff, right? So that's kind of a high level process for a transition for that. I think we do our homework, we communicate very clearly, we're transparent, we hold some, you know, perhaps maybe some public forums during budget presentations, you're going to see a little bit on the electrification each month as we talk about this, just a little bit on the process and kind of progress that we're making, but it's important to at least be moving in that direction as we go through there. And I think it's also just duly noted that it was smart to set up the capital reserve for bus purchases and continue to put as much money as we can in there. And I think it's also important to note, too, like some people say, just in case they, they bring this up, wow, electric buses, we heard that they're half a million dollars. In fact, they, they are, right? And they're expensive when they're outfitted for New York requirements. But the same time, right now, for example, there's a $345,000 rebate, if you will, towards that. So really what they've done is they, they've normalized what it is for the cost of the bus. If you go buy a diesel bus right now, it's going to be somewhere between 135 and 150,000 per 65 passenger bus, right, outfitted in New York. So if you take a half a million and minus 345,000, you're pretty close to what a diesel bus costs. Does that make sense? Right, so I mean, it's kind of an equal playing field. So if somebody says, yes, but right now there's rebate incentives, now will they always be there? I don't know, right now that, that's what their rebate is, is the 345,000, the first round of it, of incentives through the EPA was 395,000. It's still, it dropped by 50,000 because they're getting more cost effective today, right? Because the cost is going to do that. So, you know, if you hear things within the community, right, I think it's important to, to instrument the best of your ability and it's important to, you know, just continue to share what we know and work through. But the first step of this, like I said, is the energy study for NISE, to come in and say like, what is our capability right now in our transportation center? We did have some forward thought on adding conduit into the transportation center, right, during this capital project, we're putting in a, a few different spots. Is this where chargers will go? We don't know, but we're putting in an infrastructure to be able to do that. Putting, I believe it's five conduit stubs down through the front of the parking lot. So if you're driving past a transportation center on the circle drive, it would be in the front, so it would be five for charging stations, or sorry, conduit ports, right, charging station will be back up to that, right? Conduit being stubbed in there. And then also in the parking lot across the street, in the artillery parking, also running conduit over there for potential, right, municipal parking lot on the other side, right? So at least some of the infrastructure may be put into that, right? Whether it be used, not sure, but at least it allows us to be able to do that, right? And there's cost effective to do it right now in this, in this project, it's already in there. So we'll share a little bit on each one of those steps as we go through that. Any questions with that? And again, high level questions right now, without rushing this process and really doing any diligence, any questions?
So you said 2035, you have to have all the diesel buses?
Yep, for your regular routes, yep.
So are you, is your plan to wait until 2035 to buy all the buses? Are you going to do it like maybe one or two every year as they get older to replace it so they don't get hit?
That's exactly what it is, though. Great question, Mr. Senna. Is just like what we're, like, between now and 2027, right, we have a three budget cycles, right? So we'll do our, our diesel buses, just like what we, like you'll probably see one or two big buses, you'll see a small bus with a maybe wheelchair lift in, in the main proposition. So we'll do that. So after the 2037, we might, I'm sorry, before the 2037, we might buy one or two electric buses to, to use as those spare ones, right? Then after 2027, it would be really pretty much the same thing as the diesel buses. Now, our fleet will be good till 2035, right? But we wouldn't be able to afford it, right, to buy all those buses at one time. So picture one or two of those electric buses, each one of those budget cycles, they get us in at 2035. And then pretty much as the fossil fuel buses go, right, then your electric buses would be then replaced. So it would be, it would be just kind of like what we're doing now is anywhere from two to three to four buses a year and that's it.
Are you also looking into like the power sources, like a generator in case we?
There's a lot.
Is that going to be part of the study there?
There's a, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of questions around, not so much generators, but battery storage centers.
Yeah.
Yep, where, where you might see a battery storage center instead of a generator that sits off site, they would charge your batteries, right, just enough to be able to meet the demand for whatever, whatever that immediate needs, not to fully charge anything, right? But almost like your, your generator that kicks on to keep your coolers, your chillers, your freezers and your like, or your emergency lights, something similar to that. Whether it be generators, right, whether it be, what they're really looking like is battery storage centers. Yeah.
Now, the, I have a few questions about this, but the first one, I know the battery technology has changed just in cars, you know, over the, you know, tremendously over the last five years or, you know, five to 10.
Well, look at the Prius 20 years ago to today.
Yeah. What's the current range of a large bus now and what's our longest regular route, not counting sporting events? And then how many big buses do we have in our fleet? I know you said we have 28 vehicles in the fleet, but how many of those are big buses?
Oh, I just looked at, I'm going to say 13, does that sound right? 1365 passenger? 13. So 13 large vehicles, right, to answer your question. So right now, and this is, this is something that you'll hear, you'll hear people talk a little bit about earlier last, but well, we can't drive all the way to blank sporting event right in the picture. Nobody is talking right now about the electric buses doing field trips to DC or doing, you know, a sporting event to, you know, one of the districts, let's say Lansing or Trumburn or Wyland, nobody's talking about that. We're talking about just about your regular routes. And everything that you're hearing really, and you know, Carrie, we heard this many times, is do something that's safe, right? You want to do something that you know that these buses can do, right? Don't put it up for failure for day one, right? Don't go put it on an 87 mile trip that goes through the hills at, you know, minus 20 degrees, you're safe, right? So put something, you know, put, put these buses into your rotation where they can be successful, downtown runs, short runs, right? And start to collect some analytics on it to say what works and what doesn't work, how could they, how, how can they perform? And then you asked a little question with the battery performance, right? It really depends on some of your, your hills, right, your geographical area, right? Your temperature, are you running a heater at the same time? All of that stuff will, will deplete the battery sooner. But you're, you're seeing anywhere, and I'm going to use a large range because we've, we've heard a lot about it, anywhere from like 80 to 120 miles out of a charge, right? But there's a lot of variables that go into that that could have, you know, the weight of the bus, the starts and stops, the temperature, all of that stuff could, could factor into the, the performance of that.
And what's our longest regular route?
From start to finish, I don't quote you, but I'll say from the, oh, 60 mile range, 60 to 68 mile range.
That's why it's good that we're at maybe a couple next year after we do the energy study to have the testing. And even then, by 2035, who knows where the technology is going to be, so.
Yeah.
That's why we're not over, and that's one thing they said at NISBA was don't overbuy your buses, don't jump in crazy, there's a couple districts who have and now they're, they're ones who are sort of having some issues with it because there isn't the testing, they don't, you know, so we're not, we're not doing that. I think it's smart to do the study, get a couple, see how they go, see what happens with the technology. I mean, there was talk even at the conference about are we going to have hybrid buses? Is the law going to change? I mean, there's, there's so much unknown right now, but.
And I think you'll see huge, in your testing, you know, I think you'll see huge fluctuations, like you said, between September, January, June, you know, that data is going to look very different.
I'm sure. And rules may have to change a little bit too, right? But again, I think doing things very calculated, right, introduce a couple buses into the fleet just to see what works. And, and I say this with all sincerity, is to practice on them, right? Let their drivers, drivers train them, let our mechanics play with them, take them apart, what do they look like, how are they performing, right? Collect data on that to see what is it that we need. And I know that New York State is really big right now, is collecting feedback from the buses that are in, in use now. What are you seeing? They really want to know from districts like a Benhamton that are very much in a, you know, a city type of setting, that might have more starts and stops or bus stops or whatever, than more rural settings like us, right, that are going, you know, up 1,600 feet elevation, right, and back down many times. So just to collect data on that too. I think that's a pretty, again, I always like to kind of shoot for the, some of those goals, and I think probably a realistic goal to have one or two buses on a proposition in May of 2024. So it gives us some, some time to really do our homework, talk to reps and vendors and funding sources and that kind of stuff, and really let technology develop.
We do the energy study this year, which I think is good that we do. At what point do we get DOT involved to do an analysis of like bridges and roads? I mean, because the weight of these buses, as we're told, they're massive.
So we do the energy study and then Cornus Technology with Leonard Bus would actually come in and do all of that transportation.
Oh, fantastic.
Yep. Do the energy study first?
Get involved, it's open.
They weigh more than the diesel.
Way more.
We actually, we actually just heard, right, that's one of those, that's, yes, they weigh more, but we just actually heard from Leonard Bus and Cornus Technology, 706 in my head, that it was 700 pounds heavier.
800?
It was, was it? Was it 800? Okay. There were 700 or 800 pounds more, right, than what a, than what a diesel bus is right now with the, with the current battery sound, right? Now you can get a, a larger battery, which is a, I can't remember the exact amount because we astronomically wouldn't consider it, and then it's a considerable amount heavier, but the ones they're putting in right now, it was like 700 or 800 pounds heavy.
Well, that's better than a couple years ago, because they were saying it was double weight.
And I mean, a thousand, like the name of the thing is a thousand pounds isn't a lot if you're crossing a major bridge, but a thousand pounds on these little rinky bridges that we cross over through the hills and valley scare, like.
Could be, yep. But right now, like I said, that's all changed too.
Yeah, that's, that's a huge difference from two years ago, so.
We know a good civil engineer that'll take care of it.
Yeah, I mean, all the bridges, they're going to be posted, so I, I don't think you really have to go through and evaluate all the bridges.
Yeah, the, the transportation study really looks at your routes, right? It looks at, it looks at your, it looks at your, but we'll, we'll blame them if we can't, is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, we just have someone check it out.
No, they look at, they, they look at everything from, you know, your performance of your current buses, right, to your daily mileage, your morning routes, your afternoon routes, like the time that they, every bus warms up before they leave, right? There, there's so much that those transportation studies looked at that they come back in and they give you pretty good analysis. They tell you, really what you want out of that is what routes right now should we practice these buses on, right? What can we go be successful at right now and, and try, right? That's, that's a key piece of that transportation study at least, I'm one.
I know Mike Corbin will go out and jump up and down in his project and what do you think it looks all right? Okay, go ahead.
Good, thank you.
And I think that's really, I know the policy committee update, I just, I'll keep it a little bit separate, I know I sent an email, Mrs. Finch, right, Mrs. Banks and Mr. Hoskins are on the policy committee, is just setting up the recurring monthly policy meeting. There are some that we need to take a look at, just a couple that need, I think there's three that need the updated and three new policies coming down. So we'll start that policy process and so then we'll shoot for the first readings on then January 9th, board agenda, then to the second and relooking at the adoption. Again, you'll see three new policies and three ones that need to be updated. Yes, one more.
Any other questions for Mr. Wallock? Thank you. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the minutes when the regular board of education meeting held on November 14th, 2023.
Moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the personnel consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolved that in accordance with New York State labor law, the Board of Education hereby approves increasing all employees' hourly rates to $15 per hour on December 31st, 2023,[1683.20]